Payments. Which we in turn asked for permission to be able to participate in this program, which we did back in August second. And we put into resolution twenty nineteen R. So billing and collection, we did, we went ahead and initiated the cost reconciliation process. We went through a study of our costs and application process. And we submitted it to the, to the program. Now, they accepted it and we were in back in March twenty nineteen. So this reported period, because that was accepted on March first, begins on March first, September through September, which would mark our fiscal period. Even though it's not a complete year. But some things have happened, some changes have happened within the program. Basically, um, they've changed the goalposts on us. The money's still there, the program's still there. But now, in order for us to collect this unpaid cost, we have to um, add some language to our ordinance or to our process. So, and we do want to recover some of this unpaid money. It's still there and it's still through twenty twenty-two. Before it was um, the uninsured, Medicaid, over Medicaid, underinsured. It covered a big spectrum. Now, we have to be able to prove, what they want us to do is that they want us to prove that they are indeed in a state of hardship. Okay? So um, we have to be able to establish this and this is what we wanted to let you know. This, this year that what we just looked at through March first, March first through September is not effective. But this coming year, we're gonna have to change our process and how we uh, ask for this money and how we view this unpaid portion of it. So in order to do that, we have to implement a charity hardship assistance policy through, through you all. You, you have to work it and decide this is what you want to do. Uh, legal is helping us at this, at this point. We, we have a few questions that we're still unsure of, it's still a new program. So we still have some unanswered questions on specifics. But what we do know at this point is what we have now. So now, we offer a discount to people who fit a hardship or a charity um, criteria. So if they fit within the poverty level or um...
They have to prove that, you have to come in?
Yes, there's a process. And it's, it's a very specific process. But luckily for us, we already had a lot of that in place within our department as it is. Uh, recording, uh, our phones are recorded and we have accounts with Experian and these things that help us be able to pull these, this information. So we can only recover the, the portion that we discount now. But we have to be able to prove with the patient that they are indeed within this charity criteria. Uh, yes ma'am?
You said we can only recover the amount we discount?
Yes.
So this that says the balance after the hardship discount will be considered for reimbursement?
Well, it's the balance, yes, the balance that we discounted. Uh, I know it's a little, it seems a little...
Go again.
Okay. But it's the balance that we discounted that we can recover. So whatever we said, okay, you're eligible for a thirty percent discount, we can ask, we, we can recover that amount.
From this charity?
Yes, yes. Currently now, what it was is whatever wasn't paid, we could ask for it. Now we have to say it's a thirty percent and that balance we could ask for. And then the patient is still responsible for the rest.
As they were before, I'm sorry ma'am, as they were before?
As they were before.
Okay.
But um, things change a little bit now because before, if they didn't, if they didn't pay, we would, we could turn them over to our collection agency, they could work it. Now we can't.
Can you turn any portion of it?
If we discount it, it's done. It's done, we can't do anything with it anymore. Private pay is our, our biggest culprit of non-payment. So um, we know what we're working with now. So we're just gonna try to recover some of the difference there to begin with. So the eligibility is income level, their credit score, employment status, economic data, specific geographic areas. The rest of the patients act in good faith. We still offer discounted bills or, or payment plans that don't fit within this poverty level. So we still have something in place, so it just doesn't completely go away, what we're practicing now. So this is, this is the steps. We have to first be able to prove that they're in the poverty level. So it's either a phone interview, we, it has to be recorded where we ask a few questions. If that's not possible, let's say that um, they don't fit within the poverty level, but they still maintain that they can't pay it, okay, well let's progress to the next step. Let's pull uh, your credit score. So a credit score of five fifty or below would, would allow you to participate in the program. Okay, I've got a score of five fifty-five, okay, you don't, you still don't fit. So let's go to the next one. Do you live in an area that's been deemed by the IRS as a poverty uh, area? Living within this area, so. It's this progression and we can use this progression to use it. And even though they may fail at the first one, does, doesn't quite mean that they're kicked out of the program. Okay? So this is the poverty level at this point. And this is what we're gonna base it on, a hundred percent, two hundred percent. We, we toyed with going three hundred percent, but um, those are still things that are preliminarily, we're discussing. We really want to get to a solid number where we could recover as much as we can and ask as much as we can to be reimbursed. So we can get paid for, for what we do, what gets done. The fire department works very hard and we could try to recover. So this is, like I said, our preliminary thoughts, maybe a fifty percent reduction. If you fit within the income level of a hundred percent, if you don't make, if you're one person, you make twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty, then you get a fifty percent discount on your bill and we can recover that fifty percent that we offered. And so forth with the two hundred percent, which is just double. Twenty-five thousand, five twenty is double or two hundred percent of twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty. Or three hundred percent, but that's, we're still not really thinking that far ahead. I, I don't think that three hundred percent would be a wise thing because those are people that don't fit in the, the poverty program. That means if we give them an opportunity to be in the program and they don't have any reduction, that means we can't collect them.
At all.
At all. So I, three hundred percent doesn't quite seem there and I know that some, some other places do it, but I just can't logically see us getting, getting into three hundred percent. So our next steps is that we have to implement the City of Odessa ordinance, a hardship assistance program, uh, which legal is working on. And uh, and we're working on a policy and procedure, which is both of us, both departments. And we're gonna work on the cover letter, we'll work with legal on that and the application forms. We're, we're, uh, we, I know we've done some work on it now. And then um, and then for us, the ambulance software invoice changes. We have to be able to identify them clearly in our system, that they have to be clearly marked. So um, those are the steps that we are in now. I know it's a little change from what we initially agreed to, uh, but this is something that's kind of out of, out of local governments' hand. It's the, it's the higher government, state government and federal government. So we're just gonna adjust, we're gonna adjust to it and, and make the best of the program. There's still money out there, there's still reimbursement to be made and it's just a matter of adjusting to it.
Okay, any questions?
Yes ma'am.
Are you ready for questions?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you know, when you're looking at that poverty level, that twelve hundred, whatever it was?
Twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand a year, yeah. Anyway, that's more than likely gonna be senior citizens on Medicare, right? Okay, so if what you're saying, then do they fill out an application to automatically be on this hardship? Or is this when they, if they get transported and then they go through all of this?
It's gonna be after. As we send out our invoice, we are gonna be responsible to let them know initially that, okay, listen, you're gonna, you've received an invoice, we have some options available to you.
So everyone's in there?
Yes, yes, it's, it's imperative that everyone gets it. Because we, we have to cover everyone.
Right.
We have to cover everyone. Because if we don't, they're not gonna call in. They, they...
Yeah, that's true.
Oh, this, okay, I'd rather not, I won't, yes ma'am?
Is that gonna, but her example was Medicare, they have Medicare. So how does that play into it? Because I thought Medicare...
We still, we still charge Medicaid, we still...
Medicare.
Medicare, we still charge them, we still bill them. And whatever left is left as private pay...
Right.
Up and over that, we, they still are eligible to it, they can't pay what's left.
Okay, I wanted them to understand.
Yes, or, or half of it.
And one of the things with this particular program, the hardship assistance program, one of the things that they're stressing is consistency. So everything we do for one, we have to do for all. So with the initial bill, we're gonna send out that application and hopefully we'll give more applications in for the people that will really need it. But um, they can be actually, you know, um, based on the three qualifying levels that will either disqualify or qualify the people that need to be in the program.
Yes. Yes.
So once you qualify to be in the program, if, you know, we, we have a lot of these, especially senior citizens, that um, there, there will be multiple EMS calls, you know, for them. Will they have to go through this process for every bill or is it like good for a year or have you thought about any of it?
We, we haven't, we, the, the, our discussion was that it's a fiscal year. So th- those are still some questions that we have with our consultant. And they're trickling back in, this is a new program, so...
There will be those senior citizens who get that information, won't know what to do with it, won't call, but then they ride the ambulance and then they got this bill, they didn't know, they, you know, they don't know. So are we reaching out to them or how?
We will, I, I have, we have a person that we converted this last fiscal year uh, to help with uh, some of the administrative work that was gonna be done with the program. That even comes into bigger plane now that it's changed because we'll be able to make use of that person a little bit more. And we intend to use Devin and all of her resources as well.
Welcome to the get.
To, to get all, all the word out. And, and initially at this point, and I know that we've talked a little bit before, but the program, the estimate, estimates that we have on the table at this point for this, just from March to September is about six hundred thousand to a million. We just don't know what's there. So there's money there to recover for our hard work. This is, I mean, we, we were there. Um, and the government allows us to be able to recover, it's just a matter of who's willing to do the work to get it now.
And we are also looking at, um, so there's the option to do the telephone interviews. So we had talked about, you know, us trying to contact the people that qualify for this program and then also the soft credit check. So what we're doing is we're looking at the options that we can use, even if we can't get the elderly or somebody to call in or there are other options to qualify them. And actually, we're looking into the legal aspect of the soft credit check.
That's what I was wondering, can you just run one?
And then the, the zip code, we're, we're looking into that and researching it further because if that's, I, I think we need their permission, so we're really looking into that. But the way that the program has laid it out says that we can just do it. So we're really looking into the legal aspects of that. But we're working hard to try to qualify those people that actually really do qualify under the program.
It's called presumptive eligibility.
Yeah, presumptive eligibility is what they're calling it.
We can use other agencies, oh, okay, well, I'm already getting help from this agency and these agencies. So there are other methods that we can use to get people onto this program.
What percentage of our calls are private pay?
We're left, um... Yes, it, it's about fifty percent that's left on private pay. So we billed around seven million last year. And what we collected was from insurances and uh, the, the federal aid that's out there. And um, it's about fifty percent that's left from private pay. What's left is private pay, that's about three million that's left out there. Thank you.
I'm, I'm just saying, you're thinking, I don't, maybe my mind just isn't right because I don't really understand the, the charity care hardship assistance policy is the new thing, right? That is determined that, I mean, they changed the rules, is that, that's what's happening?
Yes.
Okay, so if somebody, if you'll just walk me through it quickly, if somebody calls and they are on Medicare.
Yes.
And they call and the ambulance comes and gets them. And then we bill them and there is an amount that Medicare did not pay?
Yes.
Okay, what, it, what is the discount, when does the discount happen? And what is this, what does charity care pay? I'm, I'm confused as to when they get there.
So they, they ride, they ride the ambulance, provide the care. Then we in turn will look them up if they have insurances or what, we'll bill the insurances. And whatever's left over...
Maybe private pay or Medicare.
Right, private or public, either, either way. And whatever's left over, we'll send back to the patient and say, okay, this is what was paid, you still owe this much money.
Okay.
Okay. Typically at that point, most people, okay, well you got some money, be happy, okay? But uh, what we want is...
To qualify them.
To qualify them because during the current program, we could say, okay, if they didn't pay, we could uh, ask for the money that was left over, that they didn't pay. So now they're saying you can't ask for all that money.
Okay.
You gotta ask for a percentage and it's gonna be based on poverty or hardship assistance.
Okay.
So well, if they fit a certain criteria, then they'll get fifty percent discount on whatever is left over.
The patient will get a fifty percent discount?
Yes.
Okay, and who pays? Does charity care pay us that fifty percent?
Yes.
So there's still fifty percent out there that did not get paid?
Yes, yes.
And that we just write off?
Then we're gonna have to, unless they pay.
Okay, well, because I swear this says the balance after the hardship discount will be considered for reimbursement in the new program. So in the interest you just gave, whatever, whatever they won't pay is the hardship discount by definition and they will pay the difference.
Yes.
But you gotta have, you gotta have approval from them after you contact them. Now, one, to run a credit report.
Right.
And two is the other things that you're associating, you get an income level where you can uh, prove up accordingly.
So the program allows you to, allows the patient, the individual essentially certified without any submission of actual documentation on income?
Yes, yes, it could be with a, with a simple phone interview.
Or it's a recorded conversation.
You gotta remember that the whole purpose of the program is trying to help the provider of the service to get some of their money back. So it's more on us to get them qualified in order for us to get money back.
What you're gonna do is you're gonna look at Medicare.
Yes.
You're gonna look at their zip code.
Yes.
And then you're gonna, then you're gonna move from that standpoint as far as the application. Those are how you're gonna identify those that may need an application.
Yes, yes, and um...
But everybody's gonna get an application, everybody, right? Except the people, do we still have the program when you pay so much a year and then get free?
Yes, that, that still stays.
Okay.
Okay.
So these are the people that are not in there?
Yes, different program, different program. Um, and this is, we're, we're not unusual, the, the City of Odessa and, and the unpaid ambulance is, it's not an unusual thing. As a matter of fact, we're a lot better than most of the municipalities. We, we average about fifty percent discount, I mean uh, recovery. Most municipalities are around thirty percent. Uh, we're, we're just, we hustle, we hustle down there.
Who's charity care?
Uh, it's a federal government, but it's run through Texas even, um...
They almost went broke with that DHS.
Yes.
Yeah, that's why they tightened up the rules. They're not just writing checks at will now.
They wanna keep us... Okay, yes, anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Burnett out there?
So Tracy is here.
You're a lot better, thank you. All right, floor's yours Tracy.
Okay, so we, um, I don't know, do we have those?
Did you send something?
I know Tina sent some stuff out with you guys.
We got it.
We got it, we already approved it.
Okay, all right. Well, so the first thing on the agenda was the KG equipment. And it is a um, oilfield service equipment rental purchase company that is uh, doing an expansion project here in Odessa. They're gonna be a Kubota dealer also now. And they're doing a, um, let's see, it's a two points, I'm sorry. I've lost my spot on my deal. I think it's two point eight, yeah, two point eight million dollar capital investment on the project. They are going to uh, consolidate um, eight full-time employees and create six new jobs for a total annual payroll of over a million dollars. And with the uh, um, application that they submitted, they uh, requested a job creation grant and a capital investment grant. So the total on that was two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. I'm sorry, three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, paid sixty-three thousand six hundred per year over five years. Um, it would be seen as picking that recommendation too, so...
Everybody good with it?
Those still have the yearly...
Yes, yearly compliance that they have to, they have to submit.
Call back and all that.
They'll pay us enough.
Yeah, we pay in the rears, they, they have to, they have to create and maintain the jobs before they get any kind of way.
Great.
Not that it matters at all, but do we have another Kubota dealership?
I don't believe that there are Kubota, no, I think there's like Midland.
I used to work in that building.
Yeah.
Right, if you're headed on I twenty, it's to the left.
Metro, metro.
Metro, metro no longer has Kubota.
Yeah. I don't think they give more than... Yeah, I don't think they give more than Midland.
Because, so they're doing a lot, I mean, they're putting in the line, the water line.
They are, they are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're, they're doing some...
They're making a big investment and really are kind of our... They're gonna be sort of the nucleus for that growth of that area.
Again, they, they were in a rush to get, to get going, so...
Great, I'll agree.
Okay, and we have um, that is Tarheel Holdings, which is a, a development, uh, construction company. And they're wanting to do, uh, they've requested a housing grant uh, for seven homes that they're building, you know, on South Crane. And then there's six on Crane and one on uh, Graham Street. Uh, the price between two hundred and fourteen nine and two hundred and nineteen nine on the, on the house, the housing prices. Uh, the grant is approximately uh, seventy thousand dollars, seventy thousand thirty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. They do not get the final price on that until they get um, the appraisal on the homes. Because if they go over the two twenty-five, of course they don't get anything for those. So that's just an approximate figure. So it could be a little different whenever they're finished.
Questions on that?
And then J A R B Holdings is also requesting an infrastructure grant for some townhomes. They're building six townhomes on Seventh and Goldr. Uh, the estimated uh, retail value on those are two hundred and twenty thousand. And again, it's based on uh, the final appraisal. But right now the grant is approximately sixty-one thousand two hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Were they built in those?
At Seventh and Grant's?
Oh, Grant's.
I mean, Goldr, I'm sorry, Seventh and Goldr, it is Goldr, I'm sorry.
There's a vacant lot.
Yeah, there's a vacant lot by the basin.
The northwest.
Oh, by the, by the cradle. I drive by it every day.
Right?
Yeah, boy.
Thank you very much Tracy.
You're so very welcome. Wesley will be here next month. Thank you all very much.
All right, out of five, you're certainly improving.
Is this how we call infill building because...
This wouldn't be, yes ma'am.
I mean, I, I thought that, but...
And this is kind of the first time ODC has done something like this.
And the one on Clint's too, I mean on Crane?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, they're both.
All right, Robert.
Cheers. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, mayor. Um, I'm just coming to talk real quick about the ODC bylaws. Those were finally approved on uh, February thirteenth, twenty twenty meeting of ODC. Uh, just a little background, these uh, bylaws were last updated on October twenty-fourth of twenty seventeen. Um, when we went and took a look at these, uh, back when we were updating a lot of the bylaws for the committees and boards, uh, we felt like there were some things in there, um, that were there for the initial bylaws and they just sort of sat there on all the other amendments. Um, a lot of what happened was a lot of moving around and removing of superpower's language. Some of the stuff we did add, though, uh, it was requested, we added a non-exhaustive list of qualifications, uh, including who could serve on ODC. So you have the, the one-year on compliance, but then they also wanted people with experience in uh, banking or insurance, law. Um, and they did, they did make that a non-exhaustive list. We also added, uh, we actually removed part of the residency requirement, which is the, in the absence of the residency, that's gonna be section two point three A. Uh, there used to be a part that said, uh, in the absence of a residency requirement, city council could appoint, um, ODC asked that we remove that and that these people on ODC be from either uh, cit- the City of Odessa or Ector County. We added in uh, the nepotism clause, or pardon me, a reference to the nepotism laws.
Robert, can you begin what you said about?
I apologize.
The previous one you just said about?
Yes, so the residency requirement, uh, two point three A, used to say if you were a resident of the City of Odessa, Ector County, or in the absence of either of those residency requirements, city council could appoint you to the ODC, um, as long as it was a unanimous vote. Uh, ODC asked that we remove that end part, uh, in the absence of a residency requirement and just wanted it to be anyone from the City of Odessa or Ector County. In two point three C, I make a reference to the nepotism laws, that was requested. Um, as well as, uh, I make a reference to the conflict of interest policy for the city, also a request from ODC board members. Again, this was a, a lot of housekeeping, um, there wasn't a lot to do other than moving things around and removing some, uh, some language that was no longer needed. Uh, but I can answer any other questions about them, yes ma'am?
On two point two B, that says the term of all directors shall be two years and the term should start on January. Because there are five directors, any of the six council members may nominate a director. There's actually, I mean, that means you could nominate anybody.
Robert?
Robert?
This is not Robert, this is not blame which is asked by Robert. It, it does say that and that, that would mean that the, that the mayor wouldn't, uh, wouldn't participate in that.
Participate in that and that was something you and I were both really glad about the right to vote, excuse me. But that gave you a say on the...
Yeah. Hey, that's my ringtone for my son-in-law, is he calling you?
It's my daughter. So I, I don't think that was the intent.
Yeah, so we'll change that.
Um, I, I definitely would add it, and I apologize for that.
That was city of Odessa or Ector.
Ector County.
Or.
Or.
And that's how it was, but then it also expanded out to, I think, someone from Andrews.
Correct, yes ma'am.
Okay.
Other question?
Did we find anything on the five or more?
And that's what I sent you, it was, it is at least five. And so, um, and then the bylaws say five, so that's the only.
The question is, one?
We were told we could only have five.
Well, that's, that's what we were originally told. And, and, and I'm thinking, we, just from our previous councils' experience, we know that with five people, one person only has to enlist two helpers to get some pass. It's a little harder with this council now. You know, to, to get, so I, I think we need to change that to a seven-member board. And, and increase it to, uh, at least stop it from happening like that, you know?
I don't follow you.
Okay.
To get somebody on O D C?
Well, then everybody would have their own appointment, obviously, but that, uh, but if, that's what we choose to do. But I think a, a five-member board is, opens it up for some problems.
Yes, you can have more.
I think we have found that seven members is more effective than five for the council.
And you can't have more than five.
But we were told, we did ask that.
That's because that's what the bylaws stated at the time.
Right.
It is written in the bylaws, right.
But, but we, I assumed, I'll say, I'm not gonna say we were told, I assumed that that was a state mandate.
According to Natasha.
No, it, it, it's the.
I researched it.
Yep, my understanding is a problem.
I thought it was Gary Landers, he was pretty specific about it.
So is the council proposing then to increase the board, uh, composition to seven members?
Well, how do we fix what we've done? If you're gonna give everybody a point, do, do we decide on the five that are there? Who wants to say they appointed them and then appoint two more?
Or you could do it like you did with the current board to vote on the other members or probably. It would be the pleasure of the council, but at this point, since we just selected board members, that might be.
But sometime you have to allocate a board member to a council member because next time they come up, we'd have the same issue.
You know, I, I, I think the problems that we had were more associated with the council's individual appointees. I liked what we did. We all sit down and we all looked at each other's eyes and say, what do you think? And we agreed according to that standpoint. I don't think it's, it's fair if, you know, if somebody had three or four-year term, then they're, they're out. And we don't like your O D C, I think you lose continuity. I'm not saying that it's great to have it, but I do think, I like the fact that we all looked around at each other and talked about it. What do you think? Are you okay with that? Where you have an O D C board that's, that is reflective of what the council.
We actually voted a blank vote.
Yeah.
Yes.
And we didn't nominate anybody. We took the applications that we've got and talked about.
How they're, whether they're appointed by each councilman or voted on by the council is not as much an issue to me as I think.
As you said, the number.
The number. It's a little more difficult to lobby three people than it is to. Yeah, I, I, my concern would be that if the seven starts being reflected as if that is a council appointee to be on that board, that's what I'm talking about. I, I just didn't, I thought that structure that we went back, that we knocked back to, that we went to was very productive. I just, I felt that that was a reflection of, well, that's a Jewish member, now this is a council.
And if we did seven, we would still not name them as our appointee, but I think we would still.
That part I just think is.
We could take applications for two more and then vote.
For a, for a committee of that importance. You know, I know we have other things that P and Z and things along those lines, not that you're not accorded, but that's a, that's a pretty big.
Well, it is a big deal and it's, and it gets a lot of real positive press, O D C does. You know, I mean, it, that's, that's our, they're our shining stars, we're the bad guys.
All right, what's everybody think?
I'd like to, I, I'd like to hear what the O D C board thinks.
Schedule a joint meeting.
Well, are we having that joint meeting on the seventeenth? That got it right?
Yeah.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, Tom, I just think let's have some feedback from them. They're the ones that presented this bylaws to us, and y'all think that seven is good.
So do we want a table?
Yeah, we, we need a table if we're to add this.
Can you get that done overnight? I agree, none of the next. I, I got it.
Of course I can.
You were it.
And, but that would change this again, I mean, the, the verbiage on this because each one of us isn't gonna nominate a director. I mean, we might, but we can take applications, we can, that still sounds like each one of us have a person.
We'll work on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm six.
Thanks, Robert, that was very good. How many years you been working on that?
Uh, six, consider a work permit, twenty twenty seal code, we're on.
Tom does a good job of this.
Seven, I didn't look at that.
Annual, uh, seal code project. We had, uh, three expensive fees for this project. The lowest bidder was at Ona Wagner in the amount of one million eight hundred, fourteen thousand, six hundred fifty-two dollars and six cents. And then our estimate was very close to that number, uh, within one percent. And this year we're doing twenty-seven pole and six miles of, uh, seal code. So the total num- number of maintained state for this year is approximately seventy-two miles. So including friction seal and, uh, et cetera.
So that's ten percent, right, Yvonne?
I want to fix that number, it's actually more.
We're quoting that out there in the public that Yvonne said.
Yeah, actually, the, the total, the, the roadway system mileage as of today is five hundred and thirty-two miles. So the number went up to, uh, thirteen point five, oh, I'm sorry, that number was for water lines, not for the roadway system. So the roadway system, I double-checked, five thirty-two, and we're doing seventy-two miles, which is, uh, so we're doing thirteen point five approximately, uh, size of maintenance of the, of the roadway system, which is a big, good number.
So if they don't see fifteen point five percent of their front block done, they need to call.
Sorry, Yvonne. And again, the difference between this and the ones we've already approved, just real quickly.
Yeah, the seal code is actually a thicker product, the rocks are, or the aggregates are bigger, half an inch and less with some fin- finer material. But it's a good product, it's a relatively cheap, cheap product, too. And we're basically this year doing some major and some residential areas that we think the seal code is a better, better option.
Okay, any questions?
This is kind of the overall, I have another map, which is basically, uh, this is the seal code, yes, this is the friction seal and the et cetera. This is how much we lose.
All right, seventeenth is on there.
All right, everybody good? All right, thank you.
Twelve percent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Yvonne.
Uh, item seven, talk about the Tommy Pew for annexation.
I'm fixing a big person right there. Yeah.
Recognize that leaning back.
How many?
Two inch here.
Wake up.
Yeah, that's a hanging problem.
I've been dealing with this since you started it, brought those guys up.
I did not do it.
Yeah, but, uh, this is a unique situation, it really is. Because we've got a, a property that's not inside the city, that wants to be inside the city, they wanna develop, and, you know, which is good. You know, it, it really is good. We've got surrounding property owners that are not inside the city, but I, you know, we have an interest in protecting their homes and where they live. So I think we have an obligation to do that, you know, and, uh, so last week, uh, I presented, uh, to the, uh, council the annexation request in the original zoning plan development retail one, had some conditions in there. And, uh, there was one condition that, uh, uh, I was, by the, that the applicant met with a little bit of opposition. It really wasn't an applicant's selfish, it was a business, uh, in a general. And, uh, Wednesday morning, I met for a considerable amount of time with, uh, Mr. Beard, that came before the council last week. And, uh, uh, first of all, he wanted me to apologize to the council, said that he did not mean for it to sound like a threat, that if that law, you know, that the law stayed, that, uh, to withdraw the annexation request. He said, that's just the way that they, his client does business, and it's an unexpected expense, you know, they'll pull it. And my position here is that we need to go forward with the annexation, will we maintain control over this piece of property instead of having them pull back and then just have a sea of asphalt and a metal building out there that's just a daughter general that we don't have anything to say about the development out there? So we sat down and talked, and, uh, he had a, he had a good argument. There's a, uh, uh, out here, we've got, uh, several plans, and I knew it was gonna do that, I knew it was. But, uh, the properties out there, you can see that they've, they've got, I knew it was gonna, they've already got, you know, seven foot fences all the way around. And, uh, the fellow that's just to the northwest in there, you can kind of see where, uh, uh, back there where his property is touching, that's where he has his business on his lot out there, so it's not affecting his residents. Thank you. So, uh, uh, what we talked about was, uh, eliminating the fence part because there would be a two-deep foot gap, which you'd have weeds and trash collecting in there, and eventually it could become a fire hazard. So let those fences stay. We put enhanced, uh, landscaping back there. Uh, he agreed to, uh, large canopy, evergreen trees, and I was suggesting a lot of oak, red oak or pine. He has to excavate, uh, a detention basin. He proposed putting a mound out there, a turf cover, so it'd be, that would be our, our, uh, uh, position on that would be enhanced landscaping on the sides that's, uh, uh, adjacent to residential development, and it would be a screening barrier. And they would have their own fences up there and just have that amendment to the P D and just take out the wall. But I wanted to touch base with the council and see what y'all's feelings were, since you approved it with the council.
Would you take those recommendations back around to the neighborhood with our approval?
We can, uh, let them know that that's what, you know, that that's what we're gonna recommend, but, you know, officially or legally? We don't have to.
We don't have to, but how many people complained about it?
Oh, gosh, how many were up there?
Four or five.
But they said they were.
I, I'd go back to their, uh, you know, compromise that you're looking at doing and see if they have any problem. At least we can.
The alternate to that.
Well, the alternate, I say it's just, they withdraw the application, and then they just, they're still gonna do it. But then it'd just be a sea of asphalt and a metal building.
Yeah, but it, but that, that gives them the opportunity to change their, I mean, the people to say, yeah, okay, we get it. You've done what you can do, I mean.
And maybe that will open that door for eventually them knocking on our door and saying, would you like to be a part of the city?
We'll, we'll talk about that.
I actually like that better than having that gap between the two fences.
Because you know the way it's in your, how you gonna get in there and clean it out?
That's it.
It's two feet.
You'd have weeds higher than your fence.
I think that's a good idea.
So is the, the council would like to proceed this way with the condition that we inform the, the neighborhood, is that, is that my understanding?
Well, I, I would like that.
I mean, whatever you do, P and Z, for it, I think we need to take this sub- this sub nominal request that it is and take it back out to them.
And they'll come back to P and Z and still complain and give you an opportunity to say.
Well, they feel though, the city having, it's like Randy said, they were afraid, because we explained to them, it's in the county, they can do whatever they want.
Right.
And by getting it into the city, we can enforce trash, we can enforce a lot of these things. And they felt better once they said, yeah, okay, traffic's not gonna cut across this lot to get out.
Yeah, but what we don't want it to do is say, okay, the city's convinced us that, that they were gonna do these things, and we agree. And then they never built that wall.
Yeah, which makes, I think it makes sense, and that's no problem.
Going back to the first, go ahead and see the first, uh, shot you had. How far are we going to, is our right of way gonna extend for Fodder?
Would that one exist? Yeah, it's an existing route, it's like the Holland, they're not getting twenty more.
So we're making it a five lane, right?
Yes.
It's two lane right now.
Either way, it's existing, yeah.
It's not gonna expand any further, no.
The right of way's larger than for a seven lane.
Must be money in those hardware, or those, uh. Yeah, because there's, there's one not, like, three quarters of a mile down the road.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a little further than that, but yeah. There's one down the road. But what, you know, you had mentioned taking back the P and Z, what we can do, these are just amendments to those conditions, we can take it forward to council. But I will contact those folks up there and get, you know, and let them know that this is, you know, what we're considering doing and that it will be presented to council that way.
Of course, up the road, there's a bunch of apartments going in. That is exactly why that one over there on the Fodder does so well.
Yeah, let me know, Randy, I'll call up there. Everybody good?
I just appreciate Randy going back and trying to talk him with him and negotiating, and, you know, that, that takes a long way, and, yeah. Appreciate it.
What was the cost of that, that street fence, they have it broken down?
Uh, I wanted to say, it, it would have been nearly five hundred feet of fence, and it was, gosh, you know, a couple hundred dollars for a foot of fence and stuff like that, what we were asking for, our decker, that should do was fairly substantial. And, uh, he, you know, and, and it kind of struck me, he said, you know, the way he said it, it was kind of humorous, he goes, these guys are cheap.
Dollars.
Yeah, and he said, an unexpected expense, they'll pull out, or in this case, they'll withdraw that annexation, and they'll do it anyway.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Item eight, consider appeal, new addition code for chapter four business regulations.
All right, how y'all doing tonight? We held, but this is just a bit of housekeeping, so this is just.
Cleaning a lot of house.
A, a little housekeeping, so what we've done is we've gone from six hundred feet to fifteen hundred feet out around churches, schools, like we discussed. And we, we've also added in the Spanish part of human trafficking. And, uh, we also want to remind all of you to be thinking about who you're going to appoint for your license appeal board, because each of you will get someone to appoint. So that's something you need to consider. But that's all we're doing here tonight.
So on, on, uh, let's see this, on four, five, ten, D, two. It says that one of the reasons that you might not, you might be denied a permit is that you're overdue in your payment to Odessa for taxes. Is that property taxes? I mean, that seems kinda general. I mean, what if they have, what if their car's not registered? I, I mean, I don't know.
That, that would be, that would be, that could be like anything along the line of a pass water bill or something.
But a pass water bill is a taxes. That's what I'm saying. What are we trying to do here?
What I, I can go back and clean that up.
Well, I just didn't know what we're trying to do. I mean, if they're, is that their water, I mean, if they're passed due to any bill from Odessa?
Yeah, I need to, I need to get that definitely up to, we can definitely do that. We'll clean that up.
She's honing in on the specific verbiage.
We can go back in and clean that up for sure.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you very much.
So if you want to be a steward, don't let your water bill get.
Pay your water bill.
Pay your water if you're gonna go work.
On further, on the next note. Adam nine, discuss certificate of obligation.
I provided in your agenda packet on Friday a fact sheet. And I would ask that you not distribute that out yet. Um, we have contacted our bond counsel, which is Glenn Opel. Y'all are familiar with him. And George Wilford to review it. Glenn Opel is suggesting some changes to that before we put that on our website or anything. He is still very much against us doing any town hall meetings, just to reiterate that. We are discussing with him the video concept.
Because the town hall meetings allows people to ask questions who we might respond inappropriately. But the videos, we do that.
Yes, and, and they're, they're going to discuss that and get back with me on, so we don't have an okay from them yet. So, um, so that's why I asked you not to distribute that. Some of the changes that the legislature did with the issuance of certificates of obligation. We talked a little bit about the timing part that they put into that, which means we have to go out forty-five days rather than thirty days. From when we passed the ordinance with the intent to issue the obligations. So some other things that became effective January one was some of the wording that goes into the intent. And we, we need to watch that in with our fact sheet. So that's why they're reviewing that to do that. So I just wanted to make y'all all aware of that, so we're not ready to actually do videos yet or to distribute this fact sheet.
Going over the timing, Cindy, when, when will they go out for pricing?
We weren't planning to try to issue those probably till May. So we're not in a great big hurry. That's one of the things that, one of the reasons we started early with this was to give y'all plenty of time to digest what we're asking for. It's one of the largest issues that we've ever done. So we're not in a big hurry, but we will have to start about thirty days prior to that. And if we go into June, July, that's fine too. As y'all all know, the rates of.
We are in a.
A recessed interest rate.
The ten year drop, the lowest it's ever been recorded in history.
I was just curious though, with the stock market going down thirty-five hundred points, if that would make this kind of bond more, well, it didn't a bond.
Well, it's a deal issue, but it's true, I mean, it's in that realm. And we, Michael and I have visited with Frost Bank, who has been our main underwriter for the last few issues. And, I mean, they're, they're prime selling right now. So even into the next, you know, ninety, hundred, twenty days, they don't expect that rate to drop much. So what, what we'll be issuing will be, will be easily sold, according to them.
Well, if you're only getting, if you're getting less than one percent on a ten year, it would seem that, what was ours priced at? Just as a draft, was it three?
Three percent. Four percent.
I bet we could get south of four.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think George pretty much was telling you, he thought three and a half would work.
That's a tremendous amount of savings.
It is. So, and we didn't want to go out too early before we actually needed the money in hand. So, and, and the other thing is trying to get through a fiscal year and audit, so that we have audited financial statements for the insurance as well.
And that would be in October?
No, we're, we're trying to get them issued by.
Oh, oh, the last, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So once they approve this, or whatever our facts actually is, are we gonna be pretty good on being able to put this in the lobby? Put it up here with our council?
And that's the other thing, that we will get guidance from them on where, where we can.
And our website?
Our website, most definitely, we'll be able to do that. Our social media links, we may just put a link to the website, so they go, have to go there to see it. But this is all things that we will be instructed by bond counsel and our advisor to do. So, and I guess the only question is, I mean, from what I've gathered from y'all, we're good to go forward with it as we presented it to y'all?
To be thorough. May we be a crack month, probably.
Well, I don't, I mean, it goes back to, I know we may differ a little bit on this, but these are not discretionary things. There's not, we're not trying to build a sports stadium or something. We're, these are necessary things for our water and sewer primarily to continue to function properly. So it's not like.
You have a whole lot of.
It's not like you have a choice, unfortunately.
The only thing I was wondering is, I'm sorry.
I was just saying, as Peggy was saying, I think that's really important to say though, so that people know that this is not just something we wish to do, something we have to do.
Goes into that one, it needs.
I wish there's a number we can put on there, because the three middle columns deal with new growth areas. I wish we could include what those were, as well as what the rehab is. We can add, I don't know if they can get it or not, but it'd be nice if we could throw seven, you know, go back to Yvonne's mileage. We're going over twenty miles a pipe will be replaced from the older sections of Tampa.
So Tom, even though I generally pride myself not to read comments that are on Facebook, sometimes I slack off and I do. On the RO, you know, when we, when we had talked about that, you know, and that is not a part of this. But what was the cost again for roughly sixty? Was it eighty million?
It was eighty to ninety million.
But we also didn't have contract either.
We didn't have, we didn't find a water.
But I mean, one of the comments had to do with the taste of our water and blah, blah, blah. And, and, you know, that's one of the things that, you know, I hope, hope someone in the room realizes. That that is such an expensive project, that that's why we've chosen to hold off on that for right now. Because these are, these are definitely.
These are have tos.
Well, when we started talking about that, we didn't have the infrastructure problem we have now. Because, I mean, I don't know, I mean, car, I mean, houses and residents from now out in that Lawndale area, but what does that gotta be, close to a thousand houses?
Well, and then also with our treatment plan, correct me if I'm wrong, I like. With the demands from ECA on our treatment facility, you know, to provide water out there. That's also going to add to the strain of our treatment plan, will it not?
It, it definitely is a part of our capacity. It already is.
But as it, as that expands.
And so when, when we work contracts with them, we look to apportion our cost recovery based on how much of our capacity. Those calculations do base on.
We have to get the citizens paid for that. We build, yes, so. Okay, other questions?
Have we thought about rescheduling the tours?
We're afraid to.
It's quite delightful.
We, we can, we can certainly schedule it next week or if we want to.
But that doesn't mean that you can't do the tours and I can.
I'll be in the heat of battle at spring break.
Yeah, next week. Which means nothing in the accounting world.
Spring break means night.
Are any more questions? Okay, thank y'all very much. We are adjourned.
Thank you, sir.